Good afternoon. I'd like to welcome our stakeholders tuning into the audio webcast and those who are here in Washington DC observing our meeting in person. Before we begin with the business of our meeting, I'd like to mention that earlier today, some of our trustees met with members of congressional offices to discuss the importance of high quality accounting standards to the US capital markets and the need to support an independent standard setting process. Today's meeting will include reports from the FASB Chair, the GAZB Vice Chair, the FAF Executive Director and the FAF Treasurer. We'll receive reports about the latest activities of the Financial Accounting Standards Advisory Council and the Governmental Governmental Accounting Standards Advisory Council. And we'll also receive a report from the Trustees Standard Setting Process Oversight Committee. Before we get to those reports, I'd like to take a moment to recognize FASB member Gary Buser, who will compete, complete his five-year term on June 30th, 2023. Gary joined the FASB in 2018 and we thank him for his contributions to the board. And as Gary winds down his term on the FASB, we're delighted to be able to welcome Joyce Joseph. Joyce will begin her official term on the FASB on July 1st, but has already joined us in Norwalk to begin her transition onto the board. She's a certified public accountant who comes to us from Capital Accounting Advisory and Research LLC and S&amp;P Global Ratings, where she served as a managing director. We welcome Joyce to this new role and look forward to working with her. One last acknowledgement I'd like to make is that the FASB is marking a milestone, its 50th anniversary. The FASB held its first meeting on March 8th of 1973. Since then, board and staff members have worked hard to earn the responsibility entrusted to them to develop and improve accounting and reporting standards that provide useful information to investors and other allocators of capital. While much has changed since that first meeting, one thing that hasn't and will not is the importance of your involvement in the process. And we're glad to have all of you engaged in the work. With that, let's move to our regular agenda. The first item of business is to approve the minutes from the board's February 28th meeting. May I have a motion? Second, on favor? Aye, thank you. We'll now move to the reports from the FASB, FASAC, GAZB and GASAC. So first, FASB Chair Rich Jones.
Great, thanks Ed. You have a copy of our, my first quarter report in your materials, but I thought I'd spend a few minutes talking about some of our major activities this quarter. We moved into the start of 23 with the continued energy that we built up through the agenda outreach and right sizing our agenda and right sizing our projects that we've done in the prior year. Having conducted that right outreach, having set the right agenda, we are now executing on that agenda. Some of our developments include we've issued final standards on leases between entities under common control and a standard on accounting for investments and tax credit structures. We issued EDs on improvements to income tax disclosures and accounting for and disclosure of crypto assets. And we expect to issue a final standard shortly on joint venture formations early in the third quarter. We also expect to issue EDs on disaggregation of income statement expenses right around the end of the second quarter or the beginning of the third quarter. Accounting for acquired financial assets near about the end of the second quarter and a ED on the scope and applications of profit interest awards tomorrow. The progress on our agenda is all in response to the extensive stakeholder input we received as part of our agenda outreach initiative, which resulted in well-scope projects that respond to the needs of our stakeholders. I look forward to updating you on our continuing progress at future meetings. Moving on to our post-implementation review, our post-implementation reviews of the revenue recognition leases and credit losses standards continue to help us fine tune gap guidance in these areas. We've issued numerous standards as a result of what we have learned through the post-implementation review process. And we continue to monitor those standards as a means of identifying areas for improvements. Those efforts directly led to the aforementioned standards on common control leases as well as the pending ED on accounting for acquired financial assets. Moving on, I would also like to note that this year's print edition of the codification will be our final printed version. So if you would like one, remember to buy it. The overwhelmingly positive response to the improved online free codification makes this the right time for us to make this transition. On behalf of my colleagues on the board, I do want to thank you for your continued support as we work to fulfill our mission. And with that, I look forward to taking your questions.
Any questions for Rich?
Rich, I had the pleasure of sitting next to several FASB members of yours, Sue Cosper, the other day, who was telling me about the Japanese contingent and your visits with them. Can you tell us your take on that, what your impression was and how important that is for us, for you to be involved in those discussions with international standard setters?
Sure, thanks, Rick. And I think Sue gave you a great summary. We did meet with the Japanese Standard Setter, we also had a meeting with the Korean Standard Setter, the International Accounting Standards Board, some of their members who are here in Norwalk, as well as representatives from around the world that came in for a worldwide standard setter meeting. What are the benefits? There's really no borders to good ideas. And when we look at the global economy, there are certainly issues that may, someone may be seeing in a different part of the world that we'll be seeing here soon. So to share ideas, to share information and share potential solutions have all been a great help to us. I know they benefit meeting with us, but we greatly benefit from meeting with them.
Other questions, Tim?
Thanks Ed and Rich, thanks for the report and congratulations on the really successful outreach program to build the technical agenda and where we're going, I think it's really exciting. Of course, things change every day after you do the outreach and banks have been in the news a little bit lately. And Silicon Valley Bank, you know, the events there, I know have caused people to question whether the standards are right or wrong, whatever it may be. And just curious what your thoughts on how, if at all, that might impact the technical agenda going forward?
Sure, and thanks, thanks, Tim. That's certainly been in the news, right? The issue of held to maturity accounting, is that the best accounting? You know, it's an amortized cost model, those entities present in some cases a fair value of those items either on the face of the balance sheet or in the footnotes. So it's been been clear from the input we've gotten from investors that they have that information. But some have raised the question of should there be a change in the accounting? I would also point out, others have pointed out to us, they believe they have all the information and the accounting should not change. We've gotten a couple of gender requests, those are things that we'll consider as part of our normal process. But it's something we're watching. I was happy to read both the Fed report on that particular institution as well as an FDIC report on another institution, where they talked about some of the contributing factors and did not cite accounting.
Thanks, Rich.
Any other questions for Rich? Great, seeing none. With apologies to Candy Wright, the Chair of the PCC, I neglected to mention that she also has a report for us and we'll queue that up now. Thank you Candy, sorry about that.
Great, thank you, appreciate it. So I am here to talk about the activities since last May, which is the last time I met with the trustees. And we have been busy, so I'll try to highlight all of our activities of significance. So the first topic that I would like to talk about is our research agenda item on stock compensation disclosures. It's a narrow scope item. However, we believe there might be some opportunity to provide some relief for disclosures that may not be as relevant to private company stakeholders that are costly to prepare. So we formed a working group, since I met with you last, of PCC members. And we've been working with staff to design some outreach questions and materials and have performed some limited outreach to date, primarily with users. We are moving now into the practitioner group to perform the outreach. And we had two PCC members that really dove in and really helped prepare the materials that we're using for our outreach call. They, one was a user and one was a, he's a practitioner but a preparer as well. And they really came up with a good starting point for our discussions. So we look forward to continuing our outreach and to potentially have some, some more definitive feedback by the end of the year. The next item that I would like to cover is the profits interest item that is actually on the board's agenda, as Rich said, I think he said it's coming out tomorrow, so yay. It was a PCC research project prior to becoming a board project. And we really believe that this is going to provide much needed guidance in the form of examples for private company stakeholders to use that may not have access to big four materials or may not have access to the interpretation of the large firm materials to apply the complex accounting that is surrounding profits interest agreements. So we're looking forward to seeing that as well and hearing the feedback from the public on that exposure draft. We've been providing comments and feedback on the lease implementation. It was effective for private companies in, for December 31st, 2022. And I'll get into that in a little bit, but we are continuing to hear comments on leases and will continue to provide that feedback to the boards and the, and the staff. We are following closely the board's project on accounting for and disclosure of software costs. This is a project that is really meaningful for private company stakeholders as far as the operationality for private companies. Sometimes the tracking of those costs can be complex and require a lot of resources. So we want to make sure that we provide feedback as the board and the staff explore the various options related to this project. We also want to, to make sure that private company stakeholder comments are considered with respect to the identification of the unit of account for, for, in the agile software development space and also the challenges that surround determining whether it's a maintenance or an enhancement. So we are going to continue to provide feedback as the board continues its discussion on that project. Relating to the disaggregation income statement expense project, the board just made a decision that that project would only apply to public companies. The PCC fully supports that decision. We also agree with the conclusions that the board made as it considered the private company decision-making framework to come to their conclusions. And so we appreciate the consideration for that project as well and agree with the scope. Now moving on to our communication and outreach. The staff put together a plan and we adopted the plan relating to our town halls and our liaison meetings. This is, this plan really formalizes our stakeholder groups and outreach groups that we want to make sure that we connect with on a periodic basis and puts together kind of a timeline of when we should connect with those groups to get the feedback that we need for private companies. And it's also going to help us plan those liaison and town hall meetings more efficiently and hopefully be more effective to get what we need out of those meetings. So we appreciate the staff's efforts in putting that plan together. We participate in the private company and not-for-profit organizations webcasts that are done biannually. And in the June and the December webcasts, there were 1,200 and 840 participants respectively on those webcasts. So it's getting good, good outreach and we're hearing good feedback from, from that as well. Relating to the leases that I alluded to, we had a town hall meeting at the AICBA Engage Conference in 2022, where we heard significant feedback about the issues that practitioners were having related to related party leases under common control arrangements and the difficulties they were having in applying the current lease guidance to, to that type of arrangement. And so the, so the PCC and the board discussed that at our June meeting, it was right after the town hall, so we discussed it immediately. And the board and the PCC recommended that the staff take, you know, action with this and to do outreach to determine if there was something that could be done to try to find solutions. The PCC worked with the staff and the board related to this. And as Rich mentioned earlier, that in March of 2023, the ASU 23-01 under leases under common control arrangements was issued, which provided much relief to private companies and much guidance related to applying the lease standard. So that was very much appreciated and it was directly related to the feedback that we got at that town hall meeting. We had two other liaison meetings during 2022 and we have two scheduled so far for 2023. One of those is a first for us, we are going to be joining the AICPA peer review conference and having a town hall there. Many of those peer reviewers, you know, interact with firms of all sizes all over the country. And so we are looking for great feedback from that group. I've been to that conference, those people are not shy. So we are looking for good feedback and comments to see if there's anything else that we need to consider from a private company perspective. So I am happy to take any questions.
Thank you Candy, any questions for Candy? Great, seeing none. Our next report is from the FASAC Chair Mike Morrow. Mike?
Thank you. My report can be found in tab 17 in your materials and includes activities through the end of March and like to highlight some of the recent activities and some upcoming plans as well. The March FASAC meeting was held in person, the first topic on the boards was the board's research project relating to definition of a derivative. Council members had a robust discussion about the definition of the derivative, provided input about potential refinements to the scope of the guidance and topic 815. Council members were generally supportive of the board adding a technical agenda project in this area to further address the definition of a derivative and noted the pervasiveness of certain arrangements under consideration by the board such as R&amp;D funding, ESG linked items, similar features. Overall, council members who are investors noted that the accounting for certain arrangements as a derivative does not always result in decision useful information and qualitative information about those arrangements typically results in greater decision useful information than quantifying a fair value for those arrangements. The second topic we addressed was the effect of changing business practices and emerging accounting issues. During the session, council members identified a host of emerging accounting issues, changing new business practices and trends in the current environment and whether there were any emerging accounting issues that may require future standard setting improvements by the board. It was really effectively a brainstorming effort in that regard to align what people may be seeing in their day-to-day world with topics that the board is considering. The topics that generated the most discussion among council members were the statement of cash flows, financial key performance indicators, inflation in foreign currency, exchange rates, supply chain financing and agreements, research and development costs and accounting for advertising. So I think there's a lot of future topics for us to follow up on and go deeper on in the future there, but it was a good discussion. The third topic was on the FASB interpretive process and the role of the EITF. So during that session, the council members discussed the current and historical role of the EITF, identified potential areas to improve the current interpretive process. Council members expressed overall support for the interpretive process and observed there is a market and a need for interpretive guidance and the transparency of the interpretive process is beneficial. And they expressed views about the types of topics and issues that the EITF should address. As part of our planning for discussion for future FASAC meetings, we've updated and included our longer-term outlook of potential topics, which is in your materials, we welcome your input on those and any other topics you think FASAC should consider. And our upcoming FASAC meeting on June 6th, we anticipate we'll be discussing the accounting and disclosure for software costs as well as select accounting topics. We also plan to have a dinner discussion about the future of the accounting profession with selected outside speakers. It was interesting, our advisory group had a very robust discussion about their concerns frankly about the pipeline for future accountants and what might be done to help support that. So I think that'll be an interesting discussion. We'll also be seeking nomination candidates to join FASAC in 2024 in the coming months. As always, as part of that process, we're interested in identifying candidates with diverse experience, backgrounds and perspective, which are the key to FASAC's operations and to the standard setting process. As part of our nomination process, additional information about the type of candidates that we are pursuing in the next year will be shared with the trustees posted to the website in the coming months. But as always, we really appreciate any suggestions that you might have. And I know in the past you've come forward with some superior candidates and we appreciate that. So I'd be happy to discuss any questions that you might have.
Any questions for Mike? Great, well, thank you, Mike. So Joel Black, Chair of GAZB, was asked to join a meeting at the SEC at this very moment. So his Vice Chair, Jeff Provede is here today. Thank you, Jeff.
Thanks Ed, hello everyone. So the GAZB's latest quarterly report is in your materials. I think we had a productive first quarter, we issued an implementation guide exposure draft that had an additional question relating to the subscription-based information technology arrangements standard that we recently put out that governments, it would be effective for governments this year. And we're monitoring the implementation of that, receiving an increasing amount of technical inquiries about that. And so the board felt that having additional implementation guidance would be helpful to our stakeholders about that standard. So we released that. We obviously are working on electronic financial reporting, as you say, that's why I'm here talking to you today. Joel is on an FDTA panel at the SEC Municipal Disclosure Conference. It is something, obviously, as you heard from Lou yesterday, we're spending a lot of time internally and externally communicating about. We continue to receive feedback from certain governments about our, their recently implemented leases guidance. We're hearing that it was involved a significant effort for them. This is not surprising, given what we're hearing about the resource constraints, particularly in accounting generally and with governments. We are listening carefully to that feedback, we have a PIR that we are working on with leases. So we are incorporating this feedback into those PRRs and in fact, we're asking those governments to help us, right? As we solicit input about what the burden was of the leases standard. So we're asking those governments to, to participate in that. In the first quarter, we welcomed our new senior research manager, Tammy Waymire. As you know, she comes to GAZB with a pretty significant background in governmental accounting and non-for-profit accounting, very familiar with GAZB and FASB. So she has been able to hit the ground running and we're thrilled to have her onboard. And like Rich mentioned, we're getting good feedback about the enhanced access to GARS. So it's good to hear feedback from our stakeholders that that is being well responded to. Last thing I thought I'd mention was subsequent to the first quarter and our first meeting of April, the board added a major project to our agenda on infrastructure assets. So this is following on several years of pre-agenda research we did on the topic of capital assets. This is a topic of great interest, particularly to users of financial statements who believe that governments are able, are somehow able to mask non-investment in their infrastructure and hiding that in or not being able to reflect, show it on their financial statements. So and then also with that GAZB board meeting, we had our first GASAC meeting as well and in which they did their agenda prioritization for the GAZB and the capital assets, infrastructure assets topic was number one on their list. So with all of that information, the board decided to add this, add this topic to our agenda. And I'm sure you're going to be hearing a lot about it as we proceed through it. So with that, happy to answer any questions.
Thanks Jeff, any questions, Manju?
Jeff, thank you for your report. The question I have, you made reference to the FDTA, Financial Data Transparency Act. Could you give us a little more detail about how GAZB's, what role will GAZB play in, in that initiative, the SEC initiative?
Well, thank you for the question, Manju. There is, there is, it's uncertain what role we will play. We are certainly, I think, being pretty vocal that we want to have a role to play in that, that we, as you heard in our materials yesterday, that we believe we should be the oversight of those, of those taxonomies. That remains to be seen, but certainly we are out there discussing this with regulators, policymakers, other market participants. In fact, you know, I come from a user background, I've been actively talking to user groups so that they understand our GAZB's role, what we can offer in that space and how their voices are going to be important to the SEC. Because ultimately, this is a product that should benefit end users. And if, and so therefore, end users are going to have to be vocal in terms of what it is that they want. And I think what GAZB brings, at least as it relates to GAAP information, is complete and accurate information, which from my background, that's what users really want. So between that and then we're also doing some internal efforts, as you've heard Joel mention in the past, dedicating some staff that are starting work and putting together, hey, if we were to create our own taxonomy, what would it look like? And we're also working with this notion of legal entity identifiers, which is something that's in the act, which in the municipal space is a pretty complicated thing. So we're thinking about that internally, which is advancing our thinking and therefore enabling further outreach as a result of that internal work.
Great, thanks. Any other questions for Jeff? Mike?
Thanks Ed, thanks for your comments, Jeff. As you're aware, in the current stressed economic environment, a lot of entities, including smaller governmental entities, are having challenges maintaining resources. And that, that speaks to financial resources too. So one of the standards that gets mentioned with regard to challenges is GAZB Statement Number 87, your leasing standard. So would be interested in your sense and your perspective on, and what you'd say to smaller governmental entities who are having challenges implementing that standard.
Thanks Mike, sure. So what I would say, as far as those governments that are, say, working through their issues related to the standard would be, contact us. Because we have a pretty robust technical inquiry service. And so to the extent you're having struggles getting through, what does the guidance telling me to do? I would advocate that they do that because I think staff does a really excellent job, right, in answering those questions. If you're somebody that has gone through it and found it to be maybe challenging or burdensome, I'd say the same thing, contact us. Because that's the sort of information we want as we work through the post-implementation review. We want to hear about that burden, just like we want to hear about the benefits of the standard, right? So when the board considers that standard going forward, is there anything we need to change about it? Was there some unexpected burdens that were present, right? So I would just advocate that dialogue among those governments with the GAZB.
Great, thanks.
Any other questions for Jeff? Great. Thank you, Jeff. I believe on audio, we have GASAC Chair Beth Pierce. Beth, are you there?
Yes, I am.
Please go ahead.
Okay, thank you. So thank you, Mr. Chair. The GASAC had its first meeting for the calendar year on April 3rd and 4th at the FAF offices. The, the results of that meeting and memo on that is found on page 98 of your materials. A member feedback was provided on the following projects: conceptual framework recognition, financial reporting model improvements, capital assets, revenue and expense recognition, going concern uncertainties and severe financial stress, risk and uncertainty disclosures and the implementation guidance update. At its first meeting each year, the GASAC completes an annual prioritization process. It's an opportunity for members and stakeholder groups to provide input to GAZB on what we would like to see on the technical agenda. And thrilled to hear that those have been considered and incorporated into that agenda, the mentioning the capital assets, for instance. Members are encouraged to obtain feedback from the, from the stakeholder organizations. We rate those through a process, discuss those with each stakeholder group. And as a result of that, the highest listed were capital assets and electronic financial reporting, two issues that we've heard a great deal about today. Also, subsequent events, number four on the list was financial, the financial reporting entity reporting, also ESG, environmental, social and governance reporting and digital assets. So that rounded out the high priority items that GASAC saw in their process. And again, involving stakeholder groups and, and expressing their priorities. We heard from the FAF Executive Director, the GAZB Chair and the Director of the GAZB Director of the GAZB Research and Technical Activities. These reports are outlined in our materials that begin on page 98 of your, of your materials. We were joined recently by appointment of, of six new members. I want to thank the stakeholder organizations for their nominations and FAF for their exceptional work and the appointments. These new members were immediately added meaningful and well-thought-out comments during our discussion as all the members, but it was great to see them hit the ground running. I especially want to acknowledge the GAZB and GAZB staff for their work on the orientation materials. And I want to especially acknowledge Lisa Parker's work. And I want to especially acknowledge Lisa Parker's work. We had a number of introductory sessions. We have a mentoring program and prior to the April third meeting, we had a morning orientation session that was very comprehensive. The executive committee met on March thirty-first. We did some self-evaluation of the mentoring program and looked at ways to increase continued stakeholder participation. That completes my report and I would be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thanks very much, Beth. Any questions for Beth? Okay, seeing none. I'll move to our next report from the Oversight Committee, David Lillard and Tim Ryan. I believe you're also on audio. I'm not sure which of you is going to start, but please carry on.
David, you're on mute.
Okay, excuse me, Mr. Chairman. It's David Lillard. The Standard Setting Process Oversight Committee met on Tuesday, April, or excuse me, May nine. And the committee held its first public session during this time, which included comprehensive reports from the FASB Chair, Rich Jones, and the GASB Chair, Joel Black. In addition, as we do at each meeting, we discussed the advisory group and FASB and GASB board meetings that committee members have observed in the past quarter. Yesterday, we heard from trustee Rick Reising and FASB liaison to the PCC, Sue Cosper, regarding their observations of the PCC meeting that took place on April twenty-five. The committee found the discussions productive and transparent and we hope that our stakeholders find these public sessions to be engaging and informational as we continue this practice going forward. Also, for a GASB update with regard to the report received from the GASB, GASB Chair Joel Black and Director Alan Skelton discussed the GASB's good progress on all agenda projects in the last quarter, including the issuance of supplemental exposure draft of the implementation guide update and its continued monitoring activities on electronic financial reporting, which also included the Financial Data Transparency Act and further on digital assets. In addition, they shared their onboarding efforts related to their new senior research manager, Tammy Waymire, as previously noted by Vice Chair Pravidi during his report. Some of these matters have already been covered in these prior reports and we commend you to those for further details. GASB Chair Black and Director Skelton also presented a case study session on lease, on the lease's standard to give the committee a deep dive into GASB's cost benefit process. This committee, the committee welcomed the discussion on how GASB makes its assessments and determinations throughout the course of a project regarding cost benefit. And at the conclusion of each stage of the standard setting process, the committee observed this was a very enlightening discussion. And with that, Mr. Chairman, I'll turn things over to the co-chair of the committee, Tim Ryan.
Thank you, David, and good afternoon, everybody. Thank you so much for joining and it's good to be with you all. I'll cover three topics. I'll talk about what the Oversight Committee did with the FASB update. I'll briefly talk about the PCC update and then also our new due process procedure. So first, we did spend time with Rich and Hillary going through a couple of key topics, the technical, technical agenda. We did, we got a summary of post-implementation review activities and an update on PCC work. We also got an update on the current economic environment, banking and banking matters that may affect accounting. And then we also got an update from the FASB in terms of how they're moving forward on the standing Sunday work. We had really good discussions. Each of the committee members brought their own areas of expertise in their questioning and our questions generally fell into three important buckets. We spent a good amount of time talking about resourcing that the FASB and the staff have to make sure the timelines are met. We spent a good amount of time talking about project management and then also to make sure timelines are met. And then we also spent time talking about feedback that were coming from the different stakeholder groups that the FASB serves when, when a standard is being set. And we went through each of the standards that the FASB is working on, on the agenda to understand the feedback and to make sure all feedback was being considered, whether it be trade groups, investors, preparers and others who, who play a role in our ecosystem. And we're very satisfied with the amount of input that is being received and how all that's being weighted and balanced in setting the standards. We also then, moving to the next topic, we did spend time with the PCC Chair and as, as we just reported out by Candy Wright, we spent time talking about software, crypto, leasing and the rest of the items on their agenda. I don't have any other report than what was reported in the, in the very thorough update that was just given. Last topic that I wanted to hit, I want to hit is, as we covered in the public session yesterday that co-chair Lilla just mentioned, I do want to just highlight, we now have officially announced our new due process correspondence procedure. We announced that on April twenty-six. We did that so all of our stakeholders have the opportunity to, to raise any concerns around compliance with our due process procedures, both FASB and GASB. And that procedure can be found on our website. That is a really important step for us, both in transparency and to make sure as a board of trustees and oversight committee, we're getting input from our stakeholders directly if there are concerns, because that feedback is incredibly important to us. I do want to thank publicly the members of the Oversight Committee for leading this important effort and look forward to now seeing it in operation and for bringing that to fruition. And with that, that completes my report. And I think I'm going to turn that over to John for the FAF Director Oversight, although we're happy to take any questions if people have questions.
Any questions for David or Tim? And actually, as I indeed turn it over to John Auchinclaws, Executive Director, let me just, I do want to also commend the Oversight Committee for the increased transparency, both from the public oversight session and this the new correspondence process. I think these are very significant steps forward. So congratulations, David and Tim, and to the entire committee. And with that, I'll turn it over to John.
Thank you, Ed. The last evening, we were honored to host many of our stakeholders at a reception and dinner here in Washington. We were privileged to have Ann Wagner, who is Chairwoman of the Capital Market Subcommittee of the House Financial Services Committee, as our main dinner speaker. Chairwoman Wagner spoke on the importance of independent standard setting and the critical role of robust accounting standards to our capital markets. Well, as many in the audience are aware, the FAF has been working hard over the past several years in our effort to bring our publication systems onto a modernized and robust platform. I'm very pleased to report that we have now completed our cut over into the new platforms for both the FASB's accounting standard codification and the GASB's governmental accounting research system or GARS and that these systems are performing to expectations. Together with the expanded free access to our codification materials that we announced several months ago, the system should enhance the needs of our stakeholders and provide a reliable and stable platform to support our standard-setting publication needs. We've been working on several appointments matters. And when I say we, I mean the very hard-working Appointments Committee of our FAF Board of Trustees. So some of the important searches that are going on at the moment include a search for a FAF trustee to replace trustee and Vice Chair Mary Barth, whose term concludes on December thirty-first of this year. A search for a FAF trustee who will be designated as a governmental trustee and will replace FAF trustee and Treasurer David Lillard, whose term will also conclude on December thirty-first of this year. A search for a FASB member to replace Jim Croker, whose term will conclude on July thirty-first of two thousand and twenty-four. And last but certainly not least, a search to replace Candy Wright as the Chair of the PCC. Candy's term will end also on December thirty-first of this year. And when I say replace, let me suggest it's, we can't replace any of these individuals I just, I just mentioned. We hope to be able to announce appointments for each of the searches I mentioned before the end of this calendar year. Finally, I'd just like to note that the FAST two thousand and twenty-two annual report is nearly complete with a continuing theme of standards that work from Main Street to Wall Street. Our report will be posted online early this summer with on-demand print copies available upon request. And so, Mr. Chairman, that's my report. I'd be happy to take any questions.
Thanks, John. Any questions for John? Okay, great. Seeing none. I'll go back to David Lillard, this time wearing his treasurer's hat for a report from the, on the financials. David?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The FAF's financial results for the three months ending March thirty-one, two thousand and twenty-three are located on Master Page one oh one of your materials. Overall, the financial condition of the FAF remains strong. I'd like to report that net assets increased forty-seven point seven million dollars primarily related to the recognition of the entire year of FASB and GASB accounting support fees in the first quarter. In addition, overall, this amounted to a one point nine million dollar favorable variance against the budget. This includes first, operating expenses of almost one million dollars favorable against budget, primarily due to salary and benefits for several vacant positions across FASB, GASB and FAF and lower travel and meeting costs due to timing. This was somewhat offset by an increase in publishing costs for overlapping maintenance and support while rolling out the new publishing platform. Also, reserve fund investment income was six hundred thousand dollars favorable against budget due to favorable market conditions. And finally, publishing revenues were four hundred thousand dollars favorable against budget primarily due to two months of unbudgeted FASB codification and GARS online subscription revenue with rollout of the enhanced free view at the end of February. In conclusion, the overall headcount was six below budget during this period, reflecting several FAF, FASB and GASB position vacancies. Mr. Chairman, that concludes my report.
Thank you, David. Any questions for David? Pretty good report, too. Things are in good shape. So this, this is the end of the, of the public session of today's FAF Board of Trustees meeting. Thank you again to all who tuned in on the webcast and those of you who joined us in person. If I may, let me remind everyone that the next FAF Board of Trustees meeting will be held virtually on Tuesday, August twenty-second. And with that, thanks so much and have a great day.